Ready to go.
All right. In that case, I'll, uh, I'll this meeting order and would you all join me in the pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. There's a little bit of delay, but it seems to work all right. Kathy, if you, Swanson, our city clerk, if you can hear us, would you do roll call, please?
All righty, Mayor McGowan.
Here.
Matthew Lund.
Present.
John Wondo.
Here.
Ruston Weaver is absent. Stephen Harper.
Present.
Mickey Holt.
Here.
Beth Williams is absent. Ken Ratliff.
Here.
All right.
Okay, uh, and we did hear from both of the Beth Williams, councilwoman and councilman, Ruston Weaver, could I have a motion to excuse their absence?
I make the motion to excuse them.
Okay. Okay, it was, the motion was made by Mickey Holt to excuse them is seconded by Matthew Lund. Questions on the motion? If none, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, they're excused. So, uh, we're at, uh, approval of the meeting agenda. What's your pleasure? Anybody want to prove it?
I'm going to approve. Prove the meeting agenda.
Okay, so we, uh, uh, it's, the motion is to approve the meeting agenda by Mickey Holt and, and a second is by?
A second.
Is Stephen Harper. Okay, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it's approved. Okay, under announcements, appointments, words and recognitions, I'll, uh, read you off a few names and, uh, our police chief Kirk Blan will give you a little bit of background on them. We're appointing, uh, two new, uh, persons to the Civil Service Commission and the first one is, uh, uh, Tammy Stefferson and the second is Eric Jensen. The remaining commissioner is Jake Wallach. Kirk, you could give us a little bit of their background and interests.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. The Civil Service Commission is made up of three members that live within the city limits and what their role is, is to guide civil service and the commissions, anytime we have a new hire or promotional, uh, opportunity, those are guided by civil service rules. And what the commission does is they review any type of process we have with that to, uh, confirm that all the rules were followed, uh, all the right policies, procedures were in play, and then they ratify the list. And we've had three members, uh, for a very long time and one has stepped down and so we looked at, uh, adding new members and sort of reached out, spoke with Eric Jensen. I've known Eric for, well, uh, decades. He's been around here for a long time. He now works for, uh, San Acadia's Water Treatment Plant, so you probably see him up there and spoke to him and he said he'd be more willing to do that. The other person, Kami Stevenson, I spoke with her and confirmed today that she would also be interested in it. Kami works, uh, for DestinationHotels.com is, is, so I think that's San Acadia as well. Kami's been a longtime resident, um, expressed interest in doing it and agreed to. It's normally a six-year term and, uh, they, they understood that and are excited to help us out and we'll be meeting soon once the mayor makes the official appointment.
Okay, well, I'm making the official appointment tonight.
Okay, great.
For those, for those two.
Okay.
For, uh, Kami Stefferson and Eric Jensen, uh, will be appointed to the Civil Service Commission.
So, uh. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, for that. Okay, uh, let's see, now we're down to the consent agenda. What's the?
Moved to approve the consent agenda, this is John.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, right, um, that, I was, I was a little quick there with the approve because Ken came on a little bit later, but, uh, consent agenda is approved, okay. So now we're down to officer reports. Rob, what do you got for us tonight?
Okay, thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council.
Rob Olman is our city administrator.
Okay, thanks. Just a couple of, uh, announcements here. First of all, the, uh, the cleanup days, they're calling it summer cleanup days are, have now been scheduled and, um, for June 23rd through June 27th. So this was typically the, the spring cleanup, uh, with the dump voucher and whatnot, but, because of the COVID-19 crisis, we've had, uh, to reschedule it to this date and we're calling it summer cleanup days because summer actually begins on the 20th, so, uh, on the 23rd through the 27th. And, uh, this year we'll be sending out cards. Now, we, we, the cards, uh, little postcards in the mail, so everyone should have gotten the postcard, I think even today or tomorrow. Uh, so all of those will be sent out and you actually use the postcard as your voucher to go up to the, uh, uh, transfer station, uh, for your free dump. Okay, so a couple other, uh, things, so I've been working with the library and they're, they've now have a curbside proceed, uh, procedure, uh, for, they're going to start next week, they're going to do curbside, uh, pickups and returns. Uh, you know, we're trying to work with, uh, with, with the crisis we're in now, um, eventually we, we are going to work on, uh, a limited opening, uh, when we go to phase three, um, but we're not quite sure all the, all that has to be done for that, but at least we will be open for curbside pickup and return, uh, starting next week. Similar with, uh, with City Hall, you know, we're, we, we still remain closed, the, uh, the lobby remains closed, uh, but we do get pickups, uh, you know, obviously from mail and, and even for building permits, uh, I'll, I'll get picked up and then, um, they can come and grab it out on the sidewalk. So, we are doing, we're all working, it's just that the, the, uh, lobby still remains closed and I just received today, uh, something from, uh, the cen- census, of course, the, the 2020 census is out and hopefully everybody has, has stand up to be counted, right? So, uh, but for the estimate for this year, uh, it's 1,995 residents, so that's up from last year, from 1950, so about 80 more people showed up, uh, this year. So, and that's just an estimate, but hovering right around 2,000. Thought that would be interesting today. That is all I have unless you have more questions.
Are there any questions for Rob? Okay, we're going to move on now to, to hear from our city planner, Lucy Temple.
Hi, everybody, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. I am continuing to see a lot of permits coming through the door, the virtual door. A lot of site design reviews, CIFA's and, um, the like for a few different properties, more pre-application meetings, things like that. It means people are really eager to get moving and to keep moving with their projects that may have taken a short pause over the last couple of months. Continuing to work really hard to get parks projects done that we pledged to get done this year and, um, still following along with the large, um, development. And, um, you know, I hate to say that's it because it's a lot, but, uh, that's it for now.
All right, thank you for that. So now our public works director, Mike Engelhardt, will give us, uh, an update on something.
Something, Honorable Mayor, council members, uh, thank you. Uh, this last week, we had our boiler inspections, which is all of our HVAC and basically the, uh, interior utilities, hot water heaters, that type of stuff for all of our city buildings. They all passed with flying colors, so that's a good thing. Went up today and we did the official final layout for the gazebo at City Park. Um, starting tomorrow, you will start seeing more equipment up there, we're going to start digging out for the foundations, um, and getting all of that prepped and ready. Monday morning of next week, you will have our Merle Inc., it will be in there pouring or setting the foundation footings and getting all the rebar in and start getting that, so the progress is moving forward with the gazebo at City Park. So we encourage people, if you're interested in seeing the progress, that's great, but please stand clear, there's going to be open holes, uh, we will have everything caution taped off to try to at least make the notice to the public. First Street Project, I'm sure everybody has seen, that's moving along quite nicely. By tomorrow afternoon, end of business, all of the work from Oaks Avenue to PO should be completed, therefore, all of the construction emphasis will be from Oaks to Billings, doing the north side of First Street and the Billings intersection itself. Um, the curbs are already in place, so people can see exactly how large those new sidewalks are going to be, they're going to be quite nice when they're all done. Looking forward to having that project wrap up, so, that's all I got for now, if there's no questions.
Hey, thank you, Mike. Rob, is there some reason, uh, my screen has, uh, the outdoor view on it?
I'm not sure, you don't, you don't see, uh, everybody's faces?
Yeah, they're up on the top bar, but basically my screen looking at a car. But while you work on, we'll listen to Kirk Blan, our police chief.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, so some exciting news came to us today, Officer Flick is on baby leave, uh, so hopefully we'll have a little baby flick here real soon. Haven't had any updates if, uh, baby's been born yet, but we're anxiously awaiting their arrival. The other good news I got today was, uh, we were concerned about, uh, being able to get our new hire into the academy, uh, before the end of the year or not, and I got a note from the academy that being sort of a small department, they're going to, uh, be able to squeeze us in, in September. With the COVID, of course, the academy has been backed up and you're fortunate to get in before January, so hopefully that, that can come to fruitation. Um, we already talked about the civil service stuff, so I'll move to, uh, a rally that they have held in Roslyn on Friday. I wanted to commend the people, um, that were participated in that. They really set the example on how a rally should be done, it was, it was really good. Uh, there was no violence, no malicious mischief, everybody was out, uh, able to speak their voice and really did a great job, so I could, I commend them for that. Might have noticed a lot of police activity today at the, at the West End and it was in search of a person not associated with the manhunt that, uh, the county's been doing for the last couple of weeks. This was totally separate, it was a pedestrian on the freeway that ran, who had felony warrants, so not, not associated, so just wanted to caution your rumors that might be going around for that. And then finally, tomorrow, uh, you'll see us out again for the Claum High School graduation. Uh, they're going to have a, I don't know what they're calling it, a parade, I guess, but they're going to meet at the high school and they're going to, uh, it's all the cars, we're going to lead them all the way through Roslyn, Ronald, back through Claum, into South Claum and then all the way back to the school, so that'll start tomorrow at about 4:00 PM.
All right. All right, thank you, Kirk. Um, so now, uh, we'll hear from our fire chief, Ed Mills.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, uh, City Council, it's good to see some of you again. Uh, we had a, uh, fairly regular month of May, uh, except for there was no fire calls. Uh, we had 33 calls altogether, uh, 26 EM, uh, EMS calls, uh, two hazardous condition with no fire. Uh, one of those would be a carbon monoxide alarm and then a smoke detector activation with no fire, a couple of special incidents and a couple of good intents, so, uh, fairly, uh, regular month, other than we have had no fire calls, we did have a mutual aid call, uh, for a fire, uh, the other day in District 7's area, so, but that's actually in this month. And that's about all I have unless you guys have any questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Ed, for that. Now, uh, we'll hear from our water treatment plant operators, William LaRue.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. In your package, you should find the usual graphs that I provide for you on a monthly basis, uh, nothing really startling going on there, I kind of anticipated that our water plant flows would be down a little bit, uh, but they're not really down much at all. I anticipated because of the weather and, uh, the COVID-19 issues that, uh, we would see reductions, but, uh, didn't come to fruition. At the, uh, the water treatment plant, the, uh, POC subcontractor, InfraSource, uh, completed the repairs to the irrigation line and backfilled the trench and seeded it, uh, so we're now in the process of, uh, watering and growing grass. We lost, uh, early in May, uh, the variable frequency drive for the irrigation pump number one. Um, I believe Mike, uh, Engelhardt may have touched on that briefly in my absence at the beginning of the meeting, uh, for the month. Uh, we were able to locate a company that, uh, has some spare parts, so we are able to rebuild that, uh, variable frequency drive. Uh, we are at about 95% complete on the repairs for that, I believe all we have left to, to replace is the bus bar, uh, there were several circuit boards, fuses and rectifiers that, uh, went out when that, uh, capacitor, uh, basically failed. So we hope to have that up and running by tomorrow. Down at the water treat, where the wastewater plant, uh, we lost the programming for the Headworks PLC and it was quite a scramble to try to find, um, the programming for that. We were able to find a company, um, an electrical company that came in and actually did an upload of the program for us at no charge, uh, but during the process of that, we found that, uh, the system that we're running the platform, RS View, is obsolete and is no longer supported. So we are in the process of seeing, uh, what we can do as far as upgrading of that system. Uh, last week, we had a tree come down across one of our access fences, we're working with the adjacent landowner to determine how we're going to get the repairs done on that. And to end on a good note, our wastewater operator, Austin Simmons, has passed his wastewater one exam. That's all I have this evening, I'd be happy to answer any questions you folks may have.
Uh, doesn't seem like we have any questions and thank you for that, William, I'm glad, uh, we're able to find someone to rebuild that, it's sort of like, uh, a very expensive car, that I have to find parts for, but, uh, that can be difficult, thanks, I thank you again. Okay, so.
Mayor, like an expensive car, um, it is an obsolete piece of equipment, so we, we need to start looking at replacements of all of those BFDs, both at the water plant and at the intake, so, uh, I'll continue to do research on that and bring that forward to you at a, at a future date.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you. There is, uh, no public appearances, so now we'll go down to, uh, uh, the public, a business requiring public hearing and, uh, we'll have, uh, Lucy Temple, our planner, uh, walk us through, uh, the introduction to the ordinance and then we'll open the public hearing and, uh, after that, the council can discuss the, uh, issue. So, uh, Lucy, uh, planner, will you go ahead with that?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Um, we, the council passed, uh, in February, passed a short-term rental moratorium and actually passed it again, I want to say, in, at a later date, I'm sorry that I don't have the date in front of me. Essentially, within 60 days of passing the ordinance, which was not February, that was the first time, um, within 60 days of passing the ordinance, the council is to hold a public hearing and that is a requirement of the RCW, uh, for any emergency moratorium. So, um, this is just to allow the sufficient time for the planning commission to develop a short-term rental code, which is their identified step one in developing affordable housing policy package to present to council. So that is, that's basically it, it's just a required public hearing that needs to be held within 60 days of passing the ordinance.
Okay, so, uh, this ordinance will, uh, lengthen or does the 60 days start at this point?
From? This is the last council meeting before the 60 days would be up.
Okay.
So this is the last chance to have the hearing.
All right, okay, good. So now, uh, uh, we will open the public hearing, uh, so that anyone who's listening in that wishes to comment on this and make an attempt, you will get our attention, I don't know how this works. Do you see any, Rob, do you see any phone numbers of people, uh, trying to call in or anything of that nature?
There is, uh, one other phone number, um, 509-260-0124. It's calling in, but, um, well, other than that, everybody's accounted for.
Could I ask a question, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Yep.
Are we allowing, since this meeting is being streamed live on Facebook, are we allowing comments through Facebook or only through Zoom?
I, I imagine it's through Zoom. I don't know. Matthew might never got an idea about this. Well, I just want to be sure that if somebody is trying to call.
I can look and see if.
Give them an opportunity, I just want to be sure that they have an opportunity, if there's some sort of technical glitch, I don't want to rush through this and, uh.
0124 is Mickey Holt's.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, you must be called in.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll just wait another 45 seconds and see if anybody else, I just looked up at the clock and see if, uh, you know, this can be difficult to try to connect with.
And it was posted in the newspaper and, and, uh, all of that, right, Lucy?
Yes, there is, um, the only note that I have for the Facebook is that there is, um, it seems to be a 30-second or so lag before it shows up on the Facebook feed, so that's good to take a pause, um, if people are trying to get into the Zoom meeting to make comments, so that was great.
We can, we can accommodate technology and people, you know, these are, uh, unusual circumstances.
Are you watching it on Facebook then, someone?
I think several of us are.
I see.
If there's no comment, somebody's posted a comment on Facebook that would, that would pertain to this public hearing, so.
So Matthew, you're saying that if somebody made a comment on Facebook, it really wouldn't pertain to this?
Well, I, I was looking through the comments here to see if anybody posted anything about this topic and there's nothing, uh, that's been posted about this topic, so.
Okay, all right, well, so then we're, we feel reasonably sure that we've given ample opportunity for people to try to connect electronically. All right, with that, I'll close the, uh, public hearing. Now, uh, what is the, uh, pleasure of the council?
Um, Mr. Mayor, this is Ken.
Yes.
We have staff report for tonight's meeting, but attached to it is ordinance number 1586, uh, for a six-month moratorium signed on the 13th day of April.
Say, Ken, say that again, what about the, the thing of April again, is what?
Well, in the, the document in our packet.
Right?
We have.
1586.
Yeah, and then, in the E-document, but, well, yeah, 1586, you go down at the bottom and there's your signature, um, adopted April 13th, two months ago.
Yes, that's right, um, that's the emergency one.
If I might clarify, items, section five of ordinance 1586, on page three of the ordinance says, "The city council will hold a public hearing within 60 days of adoption of this ordinance in order to take public testimony and to consider adopting further findings of fact." So it is my understanding, after talking, talking to our attorney, that you have to hold the hearing and that is the only direction that I received. My, my thought is that you could make a motion to uphold the original, um, ordinance.
Okay, so, uh, would, would it then expire, if we did that, it would expire six months from the 13th day of April, is that right?
That, that is correct, yes.
Or we, we, or we could have it restart, uh, tonight, uh, on, on June 8th.
No, I don't believe that that is correct, I believe that, uh, we can, we can, it's a six-month moratorium, we need to do the public, uh, meeting within 60 days and then if we want to take any other action other than continuance of this at, you know, in its duration from the beginning, if we wanted to make any other action, we would need another ordinance. And so I am moving that we simply, uh, verbally, um, verbally assent to the fact that we had a public meeting and continue, uh, until it's expired. And I seek a second.
I'll second that.
So in the second, uh, it was a little bit confusing here with the motion, uh, that was by Stephen, and it was seconded by who now?
I think there was a couple of us, but Ken, Ken was one of them.
Okay, all right, Ken, you get the credit for it. So the motion, again, Stephen, how did you state that exactly?
Is that we verbally declare that we have had a public meeting and that we continue the current moratorium through its expiry, which is sometime in October, October 13th,
Okay, all right, all right. All right, I, I follow you there, okay. Are there any questions on that motion? If not, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
So Mickey, uh, that was Mickey that's opposed to the moratorium, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, the motion passes. Okay, well, the motion passes. And we'll go from there. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just as an update, has the Planning Commission been able to meet?
They have the meeting, but maybe I would ask that our planner bring you up to date on that.
Yes, thank you. The Planning Commission has been meeting. We, I believe we only missed maybe one meeting, maybe two meetings back in March and the beginning of April. And then we have been meeting via Join Me app. And then our last meeting, which was last week, was via Zoom as guinea pigs for this meeting. So we had a little bit of, you know, some IT questions and figuring out how to livestream on Facebook. So Matthew joined us as a former Planning Commissioner. That was nice to have him back in that meeting, but also to get it up and running so that it was smoother for this time for the council meeting. So yes, we've been meeting, we've been working on the short-term rental code, and I think the commission has found a model code from another city that they are working to combine with the city of Clallum's needs for a draft ordinance.
All right, thank you, that's helpful.
Thank you, Lucy, I really appreciate that.
You bet.
Okay, so we'll go down to unfinished business. And at our last meeting, we tabled ordinance number, well, I don't know if it's 1588. And since then, the utility committees have had a chance to look at it. And Ken, you're prepared to walk us through this at that time?
Yes, I am. Might have to give me just a second because I'm flipping through stuff on my screen here, so.
Take your time, it's okay.
Give me just a second, because there's one. Yeah, okay. Okay, this is the capital reimbursement charge, isn't it?
Right.
Okay.
For affordable housing.
Yeah, the intention, in 2005, I believe it was, under the former mayor, was to give a little bit of a break for low-income housing. We've really not had applications since then to have that. And without knowing it, we've been going along, and the portion of that, it just wasn't filled out in the code. So we're just following up to make sure that it's written out. And Kathy, I may need you to confirm this, but I believe the rate for the one-bedroom affordable or low-income housing is 80% and the two-bedroom is 90%. And that's the basis. The numbers from '05 or '04, whenever that was, are a bit lower. So it was, it's added in as it should have always been. And maybe we're going to get some. Kathy, did I get that right?
I'm not Kathy, but I was there with you. That's the way I understood we were going to do it.
Yeah, okay, well, that's what we're doing. So it's covering up a clerical oversight that we only caught recently.
Is there any other comment from members of the council that would like to? There was some concern about this at the last meeting. Are those concerns getting answered?
Yeah, and we probably should have passed it at the last meeting because it is essentially catching up with a clerical item oversight.
Do I hear a motion then?
I'll make the motion we approve, 1588.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is made by Mickey Holtz and seconded by John Calondo to adopt ordinance 1588 that corrects a clerical error on the reimbursement charge for low-income housing. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none opposed, ordinance 1588 has been adopted. Okay, next on the agenda is the procurement. Budget Committee is going to talk to us about our procurement policy. And I think Mickey, you're the one that's going to handle that, you were there for that?
No.
Yes, we met on it today, and it was explained to us there. It was put together by the, the requirement is from the State Auditing Department. The RCW state auditors have said that we have to put this policy into effect. It's a procurement of a policy, and it has to do with our bidding, buying things there. And this is how it works. $7,500 to $0. You have to have three bids before you make the purchase. On this particular $7,500 to $0, you may have people fax you their bid, or they can call and say what their bid is, but you have to have three bids before purchasing. Number two would be the $7,500 to $1, $7,501 to $15,000. There is a department, which is the MRSC. We may join that, and then they will go through there and they will secure the bids for us. They would get three bids, written bids for this. You cannot purchase it without three written bids from $7,501 to $15,000. Or you can do it yourself, and then you have to get three sealed bids. Now, $15,000, the third phase is $15,001, and those are sealed bids only. There is no exception to that at all. Now, on this, it was very interesting. These bidding procedures are set up by the population of the cities. And it's set up by the State Auditor's Department. And if you look on the internet, you'll find that Yakima's different than us, Allen'sburg's different than us. So you can't just say, well, they're doing it different than us in there because each one is really basically different. This is something that has to be done because we have been out of compliance with our bidding procedures here. And we have to get in compliance immediately there. So with this, I'm going to make a motion that we pass the RCW state auditor's requirements.
Okay, so that.
And I'm looking for a second.
And I just want to add, that is resolution number 2020-017.
One second.
It's moved by Mickey Holtz and seconded by, was that Stephen?
Yep.
Okay.
And then if I can make a quick comment, the other thing this brings us into compliance with is in order for us to be able to receive many federal grants, we need to have a policy like this in place. So it's very timely that we get this passed quickly.
Yes, and it, okay. Are there any questions on that motion for the resolution?
Not a question, but a comment that what Mickey and Stephen have said right on, and on the attached document, the non-federal threshold for a code city under 20,000 population, it's on page six of what was prepared by Robin for the council. And it kind of puts in legalese exactly what Mickey shared with us.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, resolution 2020-017 is passed, we're in compliance. Okay, now we'll go down to, well, it looks like Dean Smith is up, and he's going to walk us through the HL Task Order Number 2020-02, the general sewer plan. And Dean, why don't you explain to us why we even have to do this? All right?
Okay, well, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Ben asked me to sit in on this because I'll be leading the effort from now on in this general sewer plan if you choose to continue. My understanding, which I was not involved with, is that we've been waiting for a grant from Ecology, which was finally approved to do this work. What it does is it looks at your sewer system, primarily the collection system, but there is a component where we look at the size of the wastewater treatment plant and how it's affected by growth primarily. And so it starts off with, you know, looking what your existing systems like, your existing flows and loading to the, to the plant through the collection system. So getting, it's important to get good flow data. So we'll be looking to get that information from you through Mike and Willie primarily. I know I have some older stuff when I did some work for you in the past, you know, looking at the possible different arrangement for the, you know, the partners that you have with the sewer system. But we'll need to be getting some updated information on that. And then also, the inspection services that you guys are doing now is a critical part of this process. So we do, we look at your existing lines, the condition, we put it all in a model. So we compare the, look at the sizing of all the pipes. And then we look at how much, if everything gets built out in your service area, your urban growth area, what lines need to get bigger, okay? And then if, let's say, for instance, one line is in bad condition and it needs to be replaced in the next few years, it's better to put in a line that's sized for the future needs rather than having to replace it again when the development occurs. So that's the process we go through. And again, we'll be looking to you to get us started on that because the first part is looking at the existing condition, and that's an effort primarily by you folks in doing the TV inspection and the work that you're doing there and getting the load, the flows. So it's a 240-day contract, so we're supposed to be done early March next year. So we start soon. And that gives you a good, this whole summer, to try to get the main lines inspected. We'll also be interviewing you, your maintenance screws. You know where some problem areas are. So what comes out of this is a list of projects, the priority of the projects, cost of each of the projects. And then we know how much funding you're going to need, how it might have to change your rates so you can pay for these things. And obviously, if you wait too long and you have an emergency, it's going to cost more. So it's a document that's intended to be used for planning. You know, you have to reevaluate things as time goes by to say, well, yeah, this project's now more important because this development went in and we thought it was going to be a different one, right? Because those timing things come into play with this, the use of this document in implementing it for your future projects.
Dean, how often do we do this?
Well, it really varies. You're way overdue, that's for sure. But you see it probably about every six to 10 years, I'd say most people do it. Some people go longer. You know, another part of this is we know you have a very large infiltration and inflow problems. So you've got a lot more flow coming in and going through the treatment plant than is necessary. But we're only looking at your system. This will not look at the lines of the, you know, the Roslyn and Tuncadia and South Clallum. You know, they should be doing that on their own. But their flows do affect the plant, obviously. And affect your lines too, because it's coming through those.
Okay, so, anyone have questions for Dean on this? This is fairly important. Ken, I see you lift your finger.
Yeah, thank you. This is, of course, important. We have a parallel problem on our freshwater lines too, except it's not inflow, it's outflow in pressure pipe leaks. Which one's more important to attack? They're both important, I know that. I'm just putting it out as discussion, and maybe Mike can make comments, or if William is around.
I think it's.
Please.
I would comment. I'm not terribly versed on it, but at least from environmental view and violation type of view, certainly we want, obviously for the service of our customers, we want to figure out where the leaks are in our pipes. But, you know, the wastewater is way more important from an environmental impact and the public health and safety. If we're putting out clean water into the environment, it generally isn't going to cause the same kind of health impact as if we're not able to treat the amount of bad flow that's coming through. And so figuring out that and shoring up, it's not so much that we're worried about our, about the wastewater leaking, but we've had a very good history of no bad events with our wastewater system. And if we don't plan for it, then we could get dangerously close to bad events that are finable and are a public health safety thing. So certainly, shoring up the wastewater systems and planning for it is more important than the other. Although the other is important also.
I will disagree, because the problem is not outflow on the sewer, it's inflow. And we're not talking at all about an environmental problem with either of them. And so it's inflow and the impact that has on our sewer plant, that's the problem. It is not losing sewer out, okay?
No, but, right, that's not what I said, is if we don't plan for and make sure that our sewer is strong enough to handle the flows that are coming into it and figure out the infiltration problem so that it can continue, we could get up against a point where we're processing so much water at certain events that we come close to, you know, to reaching our capacity to be able to handle a flow during an event.
Yeah, okay, I get you, but it's, I just want to emphasize, we're not talking about losing out our sewer pipes. We're talking about what's coming into the pipe, okay? So it's not an environmental thing. So it's not an environmental thing. Uh, what I'm concerned about, it, it's not, uh, it's not cheap to replace these pipes and I don't want our people's, uh, uh, city water and sewer bills to explode. We, we have high rates already and I'm going to express that concern every time the subject comes up.
Um, I, I, I'm going to add just a little aspect to this conversation. The other thing that we, is really important is the capacity of the plant. And if we can reduce, uh, the, the amount of, uh, of material we put into it, the longer we can, uh, run the plant at the size it is. And we can get a lot more out of the capacity, it's cheaper to fix pipes than it is to add another cell to the wa, the treatment plant. And that, that really is, that is really expensive and that's real crucial. I just wanted to add that to the mix there.
I can also add some things as well, Jay. This is Mike. Um, one, one of the things to keep in mind as well, with the sewer camera truck that was already purchased from this grant, it allows us to be able to physically see where the damaged spots are so we can justify the means of happening to repair those. With the water system, there's no way to visually inspect the pipes. They do have companies that come out and do the leak hearing and that type of stuff. We've already paid in, or we already hired a company to come do that. And due to them, in my opinion, lacking tremendously due to all the leaks we knew were in place that they never even found and said our system only had five leaks, we luckily never had to pay that bill. But the water system is a little bit different. We know what pipes are in the ground, we know their age, we know that we need to start focusing on upgrading those. As far as the sewer system, the only way to know is one, with all of the jetting that we're happening to do and the pieces of the clay tile that's coming out when we're jetting it, and then also being able to visually inspect it with our camera truck and know what areas in our infrastructure is failing tremendously. We had a, a prime example today of where, you know, pipes are collapsing, causing backups and the backup is going into people's residence. So, you know, when you start dealing with sewage backing up into people's homes, we've got a major health issue. So I think both are mutually very, very important and we need to really focus on both infrastructures. But with the sewer, we have an opportunity in front of us where we can know exactly where our major problems areas are and start prioritizing, you know, lifespans. Can this survive another year or is this detrimental to public health and safety and we need to replace it sooner rather than later? So that's my two cents.
Thanks, Mike, that's good.
Another potential, excuse me, another potential risk is if you let the lines go too long, especially if you have clay pipes and stuff, there have been, um, situations where it will collapse and the street will go with it. Um, I, I know that, uh, I think it was Othello that happened to probably ten, fifteen years ago, but, um, so it, it, it's, it is very important to protect your asset. Your, your sewer is probably your most valuable asset that you own as a city. The water's probably second or they're fairly equal. Um, and, you know, you, you want to protect your asset to keep it, uh, viable and, and healthy and as efficiently run as possible. If you wait, that's when your, your costs get more out of hand is when you wait too long and then you have to do repairs, uh, without any planning. And this, this document's to help you plan. Again, I don't know what went into the grant, but the, the grant from ecology for this was specifically for the wastewater. I don't know whether anything was done for a water su, system plan, um, or if anything's planned, you know, it anticipated it'd be done on the water side, but, um, it, it, there could be, I, so.
Okay, any other questions? So, uh, what are you guys thinking? Are we going to do it or not?
Very-
That we approved?
Oh, yeah.
I move that we approved task order number twenty-twenty-dash-zero-two and take a second.
Second.
Give it a second.
So, uh, Stephen Harper made a motion to accept task order twenty-twenty-dash-zero-two and Mickey Holtz seconded it, seconded that. Uh, questions on the motion?
Can I actually ask one more question that just came up as I was reading through this once more? Uh, task number two, it's seven thousand dollars for video inspection evaluation. What is that? It looks like we're providing from the camera truck, what, what's seven thousand dollars actually going for?
If you read, if, if I can answer that, if you, if you read what task order is on there, it's after the city forces cameras the system. Every time we come across a certain area or whatnot that needs some, uh, that obviously is deteriorating or what, whatever the issue might be, we screenshot that, then we give all that compiled data and information to HLA. They transpose it over to a digital map and color code where all of our problem areas are for us and then supply us with a copy of those maps showing the priority segments in color-coded. We did the same thing with the streets through TIB a few years ago. So just-
Sorry, so I, okay.
But-
So that's different from the actual sewer plan, that's a separate piece?
Correct. Yes. It's similar to when you get an X-ray and then they send it to Yakima Radiology for a specialist to look at it.
Got it, okay.
But, but those maps get included in the general sewer plan, they're required by ecology, so they, they become part of it. And, um, so, yeah, that's, also, I, Ben told me that we have, uh, authorization by ecology, that the twenty-five-thousand for grant and loan administration, we think that's more than we need, that we can use that in these other tasks if necessary. I, I think that video inspection thing might be a little light, um, you know, depending on how much we need to do there. Um, cause, you know, we're really looking for you guys to do most everything there, but, um, cause there's, can't do a whole lot for, for that much money. Um, but I, I know my experience and, and you guys got some good people there, so I'm sure we can get it done.
Any other questions? Uh, if not, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing none, uh, task order twenty-twenty-dash-zero-two is passed. Thank you. Okay, now, under, uh-
I'm going to drop off, thank you.
Okay.
And, and Jay, I think, if, are you still seeing the big picture of the car?
No, I, no, uh, the car is gone.
Okay, good.
All right.
All right, have a good night, thank you all.
Yeah, all right, thanks a lot, yes. Um, okay, committee reports. So, uh, Ken, under, uh, utilities report, uh, you have something called amend auxiliary portable surface, services base rate. What do you got going there?
Okay, what we have is, uh, nah, once again, I'm, instead of having the-
Take your time.
Document handy, I'm tracking it down and it just jumped on me. Um, here we go. Um, basically, we have a way to sign up for irrigation. If you don't want with, with a larger service, if you don't want it to be tied to what you're charged for sewer, we have a way to do that. And so, uh, and it, it should be in the fee schedule, but again, due to something of an oversight, it is not. So, we, uh, the reason for the amendment is to bring the code up to the current fee schedule, to add the language to refer to the fee schedule i, in code and to amend the, the auxiliary potable service rate, which is what a customer can get if they want, uh, basically if they want a lot of, uh, extra water for irrigation. The typical residential, anybody can do it, but it's really not worth it for a residence. It's, it's only for a larger one. Uh, anyway, amend the auxiliary potable service rate to be billed at the current meter rate and add it to the fee schedule and add the incremental billing for incremental water rates based on usage to the fee schedule. So we have to add it to the, we have to make an ordinance to add it in, but it's basically to, uh, catch up to what we've already committed to through the years here.
Okay, so you're, uh, recommending that, uh, we draw up, uh, an ordinance to catch up on those items?
Um, I, I guess we don't, well, I thought we had that ordinance here, let's see.
I don't see it.
No, no, we didn't have the ordinance there, Ken.
Okay, okay, well-
As I remember, but when we worked it out, it came out equal either way, so it's just a-
Yeah.
Preference really on the property or if you wants to divide it up, for whatever reason, it's really a personal reason more than it is a, uh, something that affects our city is what I got out of that meeting.
Yeah, we have very few customers in the city that are doing this, but we do have some and we could have more. And so it makes sense, but it's not written coherently in our, uh, fee schedule. So, uh, I guess we prepare the ordinance to, direct staff to prepare the ordinance to amend the fee schedule.
Okay, we'll do, we'll do that, Ken. And, uh, and then under, under B, you have another one here now, utility, uh, amend water, uh, uh, oh, what do you say here? Re, re, rest, reinstitution charge, amend the reinstitution charge?
Yeah, that's another one that's written a little, um-
Vaguely?
Vaguely, in that the, the rate needs to be calculated at current rates, okay? And so we, our committee makes a recommendation that we, um, uh, clarify that, that, uh, uh, to specify, okay, it's in code thirteen-point-twelve-point-one-oh-five-B-one, uh, to specify that monthly city water service charges from the date of interruption of water service, uh, and, well, or from October one nineteen ninety-two, which is a silly thing to have in there because that's so long ago, which amount shall be lesser calculated at the current base rate, together with a late fee of fifteen percent of the amount. So that's the committee's recommendation to the council that, uh, we amend chapter thirteen-twelve-one-oh-five for the reinstitution charge. This is if, uh, it gets, uh, uh, turned off and then has to be turned on, that we, we don't go to old rates to calculate it, we use the current base rate.
So again, is this, uh, an ordinance change or that we have to draw up, Ken?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we'll prepare those.
Okay.
All right. Um, is that it from you now, Ken? You're good?
I think that's all on the agenda.
Okay, all right. So, uh, now, uh, we have, uh, from the Parks Committee, Matthew Lund has something for us.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a quick update. Um, City Park, uh, you know, is underway, the, the old shelter has been taken down and cleaned up and, uh, we're kind of moving full seam ahead on getting the new structure, um, ready to be put up and then put up. I know, um, I think all the, all the tables and benches and such have been ordered as well, so things are moving along swimmingly there. Um, Hanson Ponds Project is expected to begin construction in August, um, when the vault toilet structure is delivered, so that's also, uh, proceeding. And then the Dog Park, uh, project, we, uh, got the survey completed, we're working on some site access, um, uh, issues having to do with sort of the final design phase here, uh, but we're hoping that, um, it will be completed by the end of the summer. Um, so I, I just, I mean, I think ultimately I just want to thank all the volunteers, uh, who are making City Park Project possible. Um, it was a, it's a big community, all hands, uh, project, a bunch of different groups, Quanis Rotary, um, and, and lots of, uh, lots of local companies that are, um, donating a lot of their time and talent, which is amazing. Um, and then certainly thank the community for, uh, their support and patience as we get the Dog Park going, we're really excited to have that, um, completed. We think that will be a, a good amenity, uh, for folks traveling through to hopefully get them into downtown and spending money in town while they're here. Um, so that's what I got.
Hey, all right, thank you for that. Um, number eleven, anybody have any comments on that on the agenda?
Motion to adjourn.
Very well done, John.
All right, thank you for your patience, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, we're, we're learning this going better, so we'll see ya soon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Meeting's adjourned, all right.
Thank you all.
Thank you, have a safe trip home, Ken.
Yep, shall do.